I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We're just about to start the meeting, but before we begin it, I'll ask you to stand, join me in the pledge. I forgot what I was going to do there for a minute. And then Councilman Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this day you've blessed us with, and not just the blessings for today, but for the blessings you've put on this city, and you continue to do so. Lord, I just pray that you'll be with city staff and our fire and police and all of our first responders. They make this such a special and a great place to live and raise a family. Lord, just be with us tonight as we've got items before us, and all of our conversations and all of our decisions will be with your glory, and in your name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to again welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. I'll call the meeting to order, and we'll begin things with a roll call. City Clerk Denise Pierce.
Here.
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 President?
Here.
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 All right, thank you. Got a full house tonight. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Item four, comments from our citizens. If we have residents that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, the council sets aside this time at each regular meeting. We ask that if you do want to speak to the council, if you'll come to this podium, and please clearly state your name and address, and we ask that you keep your comments brief, no longer than three minutes or so, and the council won't take action tonight on anything you bring forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the council about an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So, second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I'll move for both A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for A and B. Call for the vote. All right, thank you. And that brings us to item seven, our Planning Commission report and recommendations by Patsy Christie, our Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
Okay, I quit pushing buttons. The first item is a request to rezone 4.56 acres located at 3510-3476 McGray Avenue. Planning Commission reviewed this requesting request and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 to General Commercial District C2 within Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Are there any other questions or comments with the council? Anyone in the audience in the room need to speak to this? All right, then, call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
Move merge clause, bid up.
Second.
All right, for the emergency clause, y'all ready? Well, call for the vote.
And as the usual case, there's pending actions, why there are emergency clauses. The next item is to rezone.
Jerry, I didn't see you when I came in. Good to see you. All right, go ahead, Patsy.
The next item is to rezone 1.88 acres located at 413 West Arkansas Highway 264. The request is to rezone the property from A1 and SF1 to C5. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 and low-density single-family residential district SF1 to Thirfell Commercial District C5 within Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in their audience need to speak to this? Okay, call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
Move merge clause, bid up.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carries eight zero.
Okay, Patsy?
The next item is a request for a tandem lot split connection with Pickle Junction subdivision located on Emma Street. They are creating a tandem lot to the north on the other side of the creek. Planning Commission reviews this request and recommends approval of the conditional use. The title of the resolution reads "A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use at West Emma Avenue South of 3377 and West Huntsville Avenue as Set For in Ordinance Number 4030." And you'll remember, Lot 2 is the size where the pickleball court's going in.
I'll make a motion, the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this one? All right, call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
All right, Patsy?
The next item is a request for a waiver of street improvements in conjunction with a preliminary plat for Clayton Street, northeast Clayton Street. It's actually a stubout that goes to the north. Planning Commission recommends approval of this waiver request. Title of the resolution reads "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvements Drainage Curbs, Gutters, Sidewalks and Streetlights as Set For in Ordinance Number 3725 to Clayton Street, Business Park in Connection with Preliminary Plat 2412, a Preliminary Plat."
Where would they, where would those improvements be required, Patsy?
This is just making the stubout connection to the north. We have in our master street plan, you have to have stubout connections to all.
Gotcha.
Directions, and that's what this one is.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
On McGray?
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't actually have frontage on McGray, but it needs to stub out to that, and they don't want to have to build the street improvements because it takes a.
Right.
Box across creek. And we're working out some other arrangements for another connection, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the waiver. Option one.
Okay, we have a motion, option one. We have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
The next one is connection, in connection with Creekfront 49, a subdivision for a preliminary plat, and it's a request for stubouts again and a waiver of street improvements to the south that connects to the property. There's a master street plan, a street on there. I think Ben has a little bit he wants to explain to you about this one.
Okay.
So, this stub is to the east that they're going to do. The stub that they're waiving is to the south. Once upon a time, the master street plan had a frontage road that went from Wagon Wheel all the way down to Elm Springs Road. That's not really going to work because of the creek and the bridge expense that it would take. So, what we want to do is bring a road from 45th Street east to 40th Street, and so they're going to stub to the east, and then I'll be back in front of you in the next year or so trying to get that connection made across the King property.
We'll make that, we'll go ahead, and you foresee us making that connection then, I guess, before 40th Street's redone? That section of 40th, it sounds like?
It kind of depends on the development of the subdivision. If this thing gets subdivided and fills up quickly, we'll need to make that connection sooner rather than later. If it takes a while, then we can wait a while.
You know, the traffic situation on Wagon Wheel Road at that intersection's really bad, and there will not be a signal.
Right.
45th and the intersection.
So, okay.
Yeah, we keep getting requests for signals on Wagon Wheel Road, and it's too close to the signal for the interchange, and we would just be causing ourselves a problem forever, so we need to find another way to get to a signal, which 40th Street will serve that.
So, if the development spurs it, then we may, I guess my question is that if we, if we extend to the east all the way to 40th, we're probably extending it further than it'll originally, or it'll eventually be?
Yes, but we'll end up needing, 40th Street will straighten out, and so that little loop that goes to the east right now will need to be connected so that those properties have access anyway. So, we won't be building a road we won't need, it'll just be building it prematurely.
You'll have a short connection between the new 40th and the existing 40th.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
And I think this works with the developer, so that it would be the waiver of option one, so we're waiving the requirement for the connection, 45th Street to the south, and they're putting the sub in on the other side. I believe I did, but I'll read it again just to ensure. "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvements Drainage Curbs, Gutters and Sidewalks as Set For in Ordinance Number 3725 to Creekfront 49 in Connection with Preliminary Plat 2409, a Preliminary Plat."
So, Ben, I'm not sure I understand. Does that mean we're going to be responsible for building the road to 40th Street?
Well, I'm going to come back with a recommendation that we do that, depending on how things develop. But yes, I mean, unless the King property were to develop in the meantime, but I don't think they have any intentions of developing.
So, basically, what that means then is that we would be required to acquire access easements across that King property?
If we were going to pursue the road, yes.
Well, it sounds like you're saying we're going to need to.
Yes.
It all depends on how fast this Creekfront 49 property develops, as to how soon we're going to need it.
North 40th would probably, Jeff, north 40th would probably be a part of the, whenever the next bond issue is, to widen 40th from the creek to Wagon Wheel, and it would be straightened out some. And I don't know, Ben, I guess if development didn't necessitate it before then, then it could be part of that project.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If development happens quickly, we may need to get a street across the King property.
So, how are they going to get to this property now?
Down 45th Street.
45th Street.
Yeah, and that's already part of the, oh, I'm sorry, I could have gone to the plat, you can see where that, sorry. I forget to push the button and give you the next drawing, so.
Move the resolution pass, option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there any more questions, comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, this will be a call for the vote.
And the last item is a request for a waiver of streetlight installation connection with a large-scale development at 1923 Turnbow Avenue. The streetlight was included on the approved set of plans, but it wasn't built with the improvement, and they're requesting that the, a waiver be granted for that streetlight. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends denial of the waiver. The title of the resolution reads "A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvements Drainage Curbs, Gutters, Sidewalks and Streetlights as Set For in Ordinance Number 3725 to Springdale Industrial Park Phase 2 and Phase 3 in Connection with Large-Scale Development Plan L2138."
Why wasn't the light included?
Why wasn't it included? You'll have to ask the developer about that, and I think they want to address the issue too.
Rick, you want to?
You guys want to go ahead?
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Rick Barrows. This is our engineer, Brandon Rush. I'm sure you know him already. Our intention, when we, when we first bought this property, and our, our plan changed a little bit, I really never had a problem, or I didn't think I had a problem with the streetlight there until found out from SWPC or AEP that it's going to require four to five poles and cost north of $10,000, and there's, there's not any streetlights on that, on Ford Avenue or Turnbow. So, it seems like the precedent has already been set, and, you know, we've, we've, it didn't show a decorative fence there in the front. We did a simulated wrought iron across there with an automated gate, and, and we want, we want the place to look right. We've got lights on the building, like most of the other places down through there, so we thought it was a reasonable request. Number one, from my days on the Planning Commission and, and design standards, I understand and appreciate what everybody's doing, especially you gentlemen. Some of you here have been doing this almost as long as I have. I'm glad to see that, too. But the, like I said, the design standards, I'm fully in agreement with, but one of the things that we had hoped to get rid of is, is power poles, and I hate them. The power comes for this development from the backs of the properties on Ford and Turnbow. So, so it would require poles to come from, all the way from the back end of that property, which is 400, 500 feet. So, like I said, we thought it was a reasonable request, and, I mean, we've got a little map drawn out to show you all the lots in that subdivision and, and that have streetlights, and there aren't any. There's a couple that match up with the parking lots on that Sanwa property on the east end of Turnbow, but they're just in the, right away, they're not, they're not streetlights.
Have we not had any other development lately? If we're the only, that's the only, there are no streetlights on Turnbow?
Well, the fire training building's built over there, and there's no streetlight.
And it's probably the most recent thing that was built.
FPEC was the latest thing.
Did you say four power poles would be required?
AEP said it would take four, five power poles.
Four power poles to bring in one light?
Yeah.
So, you'd have to put those power poles across your property from the backside? Is that what, is that how you explain that?
That's my understanding, yes. It would have to go, I suppose, down the property line on the east or the west side to, to access the front of the, and it's.
Just to put in a streetlight?
A single streetlight, yeah.
There's, there's no way to get power to the streetlight from the other direction?
Well, I, I don't know.
It's the same thing on both sides of the road, basically, so either way, it'd be the same difference.
The power on the other side of Turnbow comes from the back of the, back of those.
Comes from the back of the properties.
Yes, sure. We put all underground into the, we put two power services in, one to the.
Should have been.
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's good. We like that. Yeah.
Move the waiver bid approved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the waiver. Any other questions or comments? All right, call for the vote.
Carries seven one.
Thanks, guys. All right, we are at item eight, Finance Committee, Chairwoman Amelia Taldo. Amelia, you weren't here. Are you wanting to take this?
Who took it last week?
Jeff did, but that's, that's.
Jeff, would you like to continue tonight? Go ahead.
So, I'll turn it over to Ben. How about that?
All right, this is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the professional design contract for Dean's Trail Project. This is a design contract amendment for $452,820 to Garber Engineering.
This includes some things that were, we knew we were going to have to add, but it also includes some redesign.
Yes.
Where we saved a whole lot more money than.
That's right. This includes $190,000 of design fees, but we saved $843,000 in, in utilizing those design fees, and then about $260,000 in construction observation for Dean's Trail Phase 3B as we go forward. So, that's, that's just normal.
And we knew that was coming, yeah.
Correct.
So, that's overall net savings then for the project?
It is.
Okay.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, call for the vote.
Carries seven zero with one abstention.
So, item B, I don't have that pulled up yet, Ben, if you don't mind reading the resolution as well.
Be happy to. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract for Lake Springdale Trail repairs. This is a contract to over, to repair all of the root damage and, and edge crumbling at the Lake Springdale Trail. It's the loop trail that goes around the trail, and then the spur that goes up into JV Hunt Park, it goes up to where the trail splits. We had two bidders. The low bid was $134,267.19 by Stewart Asphalt. The other bid was $257,000, so.
Are they going to asphalt over all the grass that they put Agent Orange on out there?
No, we're definitely staying away from that because we intend to plant that in the, in the spring.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second to adopt the resolution. Other questions or comments? Anyone? Except Mike? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
So, item C was presented by Colby. I don't know who's going to take this one.
Well, look at here.
Yeah, I'll read the title for you, Anna. Item C is "A Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Professional Services Agreement for Consulting Services." This, this resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Yes, so this would be with Merchant McIntyre and Associates out of Washington, DC. They are a grant writing slash, they, they go out and search for funding opportunities, earmarks, and that sort of thing. We feel like this would be a really good asset for our city, especially for our fire department, our police department, Parks and Rec. They are also available on Zoom if you guys have any questions regarding what they do, what they offer, their deliverables, anything like that.
Move the resolution bid up.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. They also oversee the grants.
They do. They do the grant writing, they prepare the applications, they do the submissions, the reporting, all of, all of the dirty work, they, they kind of.
Do they do any other grants besides police, fire, and parks?
They do it all. Mm-hmm.
Yes, infrastructure, federal grants.
Correct, yes, it's on the federal level, so if, if you all approve this tonight, we will get with them, we will look at our needs, we'll get with our departments, see what kind of needs they have, you know, whether it's safety grants, Parks and Rec, you know, playground equipment, that sort of thing, we'll get with our departments to see what their needs are, and then submit that to this group, and they'll, they'll start digging.
For those who weren't here for committee, they, they've got a good track record, and, and we thought it was, it would be beneficial. I think the ROI has, has been impressive other, with other cities, and, and this would be a kind of a short-term trial.
Yes.
But they will go through the, the evaluation process with us and help us establish where, help, help establish where those opportunities are, and, and then we'll see how it goes for a few months.
Yeah, I, I would say by the end of November, beginning of December, we should have a pretty good idea of what their deliverables are.
Oh, we do have a motion, a second? Well, I didn't know that, and that's, that explains my blank look. All right, well, okay, we do have a motion, a second. Are there any other questions or comments, or anyone in the audience? Okay, all right, all right, and guys, no questions for you, but thanks for joining us tonight. I'll call for the vote.
Carries eight zero.
All right.
Beautiful. Thank you all, God bless you.
Thank you, guys.
Bye now.
Bye.
Item eight D has to do with the downstream drainage from Murphy Park. It's also presented by Ben Peters. It was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Yep.
Sorry, I'll read the title. "A Resolution Authorizing Amendment to the Design Contract for Murphy Park Downstream Drainage Upgrade."
Yeah, this is an amendment to create a two-dimensional model. We cannot put in the size drainage structure we need to put in economically, so this will help us determine with what we can put in, what will happen with the overflow water, and verify that we're not going to cause flooding to any other structures in the area. So, this is for a value of $39,200.
The resolution pass.
Sorry, Brian, that was a motion.
Second.
And a second, I had one question. I know this is, this, this is to determine where the water would go that, that won't fit. Do we, do we know enough yet with the, with what drainage we are going to be able to put in, what size storm would, would overflow it, or do we?
Yes, with what we're able to put in, somewhere between the two and the five-year storm, we'll get out of the box.
Okay.
What happens after that, that's what this model will tell us.
All right.
So, if it were the 50, I'd say let's just put in what we can, and let's go with it, but this, you know, this has a pretty good chance of overflowing the system regularly.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, we do have a motion, a second. Are there any other questions? All right, call for the vote.
Finally, item eight E is a resolution that has to do with applying for grant funding for, for the, what's the name of that? Mount Fitzgerald Mountain Bike Park, and I'll read the title of this resolution. "A Resolution Authorizing the City of Springdale to Apply for Grant Funding from the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism Trails for Life Program. This resolution was forwarded from committee to the council with recommendation for approval." Ben Peters will say a few words on that as well.
Yep, this is a grant we hope to pursue, that we, we hope can bring in about $500,000 to do maintenance and repairs to the Fitzgerald Mountain Bike Trail. The catch to this grant is that we have to maintain this as a mountain bike trail for 25 years, so that's the trade-off.
Does the 500,000 need to be, if we get the 500,000, is there a time limit on when it needs to be spent?
Yep, we have to have it spent within a year.
Within a year, okay.
Isn't that currently under the guise of this, of this bike trails organization? Don't they maintain it now? Is that not correct?
I don't know the details when that thing, that thing came in during my absence, so I don't know the details of when it was constructed. It was constructed by trailblazers, but somebody else may need to help.
It was my understanding that they were responsible for it after it came in, after we granted the, the land to them.
I don't know that.
I don't, I don't remember it that way. I know they were, they were, they had a willingness to maintain it, but I don't know that there was ever a timeframe put on that.
Mayor, we, we have a couple guys that each month go out there and do the basic maintenance needs, and so we have a contract with them for each year. It's like $600 per month. With the bike association, right? No, these are, these are their own people.
Okay, so we've been, we've been doing that?
Right, right. Our guys don't, I mean, we'll go, we won't go through the whole trail, but we'll go up there a little ways, but these guys remove trees and brush and.
Right.
Do stuff each month.
I would hope that if, I mean, my expectation would be that if we get a sizable grant, that we would be able to do some things up there that would reduce the ongoing maintenance. I mean, is that a possibility?
I think we could. The biggest, the biggest key to reducing maintenance is keep bicycles off when it's muddy. But yes, that we would invest this money in a way to try and reduce maintenance costs as much as possible.
I don't, we don't have a, okay.
I'll make a motion, the resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Do we know when we'll find out about this, Ben?
I think the application is due in. I think the application is due in September, and I think we're supposed to find out by the end of November.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carry eight, zero.
All right, thank you. Jeff, I think it stays with you.
Okay. The Health, Sanitation and Property Maintenance Committee met and had two items that were discussed, both of them having to do with houses on West Maple Avenue. One of those, and I can't remember the address, was tabled and remained in committee as not before us tonight. However, 305 West Maple Avenue is the ordinance that we're dealing with tonight. And that ordinance has to do with raising of that, of that house. I'll read the title of that ordinance. An ordinance ordering the raising, demolition and removal of a certain residential structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 305 West Maple Avenue, to declare an emergency and for other purposes. This ordinance was recommended to the council with recommendation for approval.
If anybody has any questions...
Is here to answer any questions?
Yeah, Tom, I was out there today looking at the exterior. Is the interior pretty bad shape on that?
Yes, sir. The kitchen is down to the dirt, which is really no kitchen in there. And the subsequent previous owner had tried to make it into like a duplex, just separating it with a sheet between the hallways.
How, how long have you been dealing with this?
Since 19, 2019. What's happened is in 2019, I started condemnation on it. That gentleman passed away, went through probate or whatever. Finally, it got sold in, I believe, 2021 to the current owners.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion a second. Go ahead.
All right, just briefly. My name is Hall Frost. I'm appearing on behalf of Maple Works. The Hollises, who own Maple Works, are unable to be here tonight, but requested I read this statement in opposition to the ordinance. So quote, "Our understanding was we would have some time, at least 30 days after today's meeting, to begin work on the house at 305 West Maple. Due to this misunderstanding, we were unaware we would have no time to begin work after today if this motion, this ordinance, is approved. We request 30 days to work on the house. 30 days would allow us to, number one, clean up the interior and exterior of the house; number two, begin repair of the front porch; and number three, hire a contractor for major repairs. We were unaware of any complaints about this property before this summer. We began working to address the complaints after we became aware of them. We have been working on cleaning up and preparing the house for repairs daily. The Springdale Police Department can attest to our presence working at the house. We have already had large items hauled away. This house is over 100 years old and one of the oldest houses in the city. We are committed to preserving and restoring historic, restoring historic houses in Springdale. We object to the house at 305 West Maple being destroyed and removed from the historic fabric of the city of Springdale. Please do not make an irrevocable decision today. Once the house is gone, it is gone forever."
Ernest, this is not the two-story one? It's, it's...
No, sir. It's the one... One to the west. Correct. Oh, it's, it's got metal siding on it. And the one, the one to the east, yeah, it is. It's like the third oldest structure in town, but this is...
Is he confused on which one we're dealing with? Because I don't think 305 is 100 years old, is it?
I'm not sure how old 305 is. I know 215, the other one next door, is.
Right, but you, you agreed, Mr. Frost, that we're not dealing with 215, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
This is 305. Thank you. You've read your statement into the records.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We have a motion a second. Are there any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? All right, let's call for the vote.
Carry seven, zero with one abstention.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
All right, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Emergency clause, carry eight, zero.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, could you give us an update on the cleaning up?
As far as I know, it's just been turned over to code enforcement in the last day or two. So I would say that there's been very little progress towards that.
That, that's actually going to be on the committee agenda next week. Code enforcement's already issued a violation notice. We'll be able to give you an update the meeting next week.
For 215?
Yes.
Yeah, it, I was there today, and it didn't look like anything's been happening for quite a while. There's a lot of lumber, et cetera, scattered around in the backyard. But since the, at least two or, two or three years ago, when I looked at it, not much has been done. Because at that time, we got hung up because it ordered, special ordered windows.
On the 215, yes, sir.
Yeah, on 215. And that was the deal.
If it helps you with your vote, I mean, I know I've already voted, and I appreciate the vote. The original letter I gave to the previous owner from 2019 is still posted on the front window.
Yeah, we, on, on 215, Ernest, as Ernest said, we'll, we'll talk about it at committee. But I talked with Ron about it, and he's been, he was on vacation last week, but well aware of everything. And so we'll, we'll do what we need to, to get it cleaned up. James has his crews ready to, to help any way we need to, and then we'll, we'll deal with that one, at least the outsides of it. You, you made a statement at committee that the, the structure itself at 215 is...
It's branded.
It's, it's, it's fine.
The house part is branded.
Even though they won't, they can't get us, they've got to do more things before they can get a C of O.
Oh, yeah.
At least, at least there's no need to deal with the house.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Did we check on the duct work and stuff to remember there was no permit or something like that? So no, but there was no inspection of that?
Right. I went in the, I went into the 215, and it is not completed. The attorney was going on what they told him, that the HVAC is not completed, the plumbing's not completed. I had pictures of that. They waited until basically the 11th hour, which was the Friday before our meeting last Monday, to contact me. Therefore, we met there Monday morning. And I did not get access to 305. It was surprisingly locked up at that point.
So our, our focus now, and what we'll talk about Monday night, will mainly be the, the property itself and bringing the property into compliance.
Wednesday night?
Or, yeah, Wednesday night, Wednesday night, yeah. Okay. Any other?
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay. All right, item 10.
I guess I continued on as best I can remember, so is that right? Okay.
Uh, yeah.
All right. Well, the council met as committee of the whole to consider item number 10 having to do with the amendment to the intermunicipal sewer agreement between Springdale and Lowell. And Ernest will report on this, but I'll read the title to the ordinance. An ordinance confirming a third amendment to an intermunicipal sewer agreement between the city of Springdale, Arkansas and the city of Lowell, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. That ordinance was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Just as an update, the city of Lowell did approve this amendment at their meeting last Tuesday. And I have a copy of it if you...
And I see Mayor Chris Moore here. Chris, thanks for joining us. If you have any more questions or anything.
Can you do a short recap?
Ernest, what is the, this is an ongoing agreement that, what, what prompted the need to, to make this change?
Is there any increase in fees for the agreement due to volume?
I believe, I believe so, that it's increasing the, and Kevin's shaking his heads, I may not be stating it correctly, but they may want to clarify. But we've had this agreement since 2005. We've amended it twice before, extending it. This is the third one.
Yes, sure. Is this a capacity thing or is it...
Well, it's, I think I'm stating this correctly. So forgive me, I wasn't prepared really to speak tonight. But so the agreement that Springdale has with Lowell, so the lines are paid for by the city of Lowell, but they're maintained by the city of Springdale. So every time we, the additional lines are placed in the city limits of Lowell, this agreement has to be amended so that Springdale will maintain those lines that are in the ground.
Springdale worries.
So this is to cover the maintenance of the additional lines that have been installed by the city of Lowell?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So it doesn't anything do with flow volumes?
No, sir.
It just has to do with the physical maintenance of the lines?
Correct. That's absolutely correct.
All right. Thanks.
Okay.
Anything to add, Chris? You, you good?
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay. You can still say something if you want to.
All right. You can do a good job.
Or you can leave well enough alone. Yeah. Thanks for being here. All right, we have a motion a second.
Bad enough listening to Kevin.
Anybody else in the audience need to say anything or any more questions from council? All right, this is a call for the vote.
Carry eight, zero.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
All right, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carry eight, zero. And I, that's the most succinct explanation of that agreement that I've ever heard, so thank you.
Thank you all. All right, item 11, Parks and Rec Committee Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item before us last week when we met. It was moved forward with a recommendation for approval. It's a, we've got a cell tower on the Luther George Park that we've decided we're going to put some fall protection surfaces down. And we've recently found out that the, the rent that we collect on the cell tower is for maintenance at Luther George Park. I'll go ahead and read it, and if Ben wants to elaborate, he can. A resolution authorizing expenditure of tower rent funds for replacement of fall protection surface for the Kiwanis Playground at Luther George Park.
Yeah, the only thing I need to point out is that the, the money to put in the fall protection has already been approved with the playground that we approved previously. This is just using this fund to pay for the fall protection as opposed to ARPA funds. This fund can only be used to maintain Luther George Park. ARPA funds can be used for many different things. So we want to use the most restricted money first.
So it saves our ARPA funds for another project.
For whatever we want to use it for.
Move roses, pass.
Second. Okay, we got a motion a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? All right, this will be a call for the vote. All right, thank you. Item 12, I'm going to turn that over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas and declaring an emergency. Two properties are 2234 Carefree Lane and 3601 Falcon Road.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this property? All right, call for the vote.
Carry eight, zero.
Move emergency clause be adopted. Second.
All right, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carry eight, zero.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item 13. We put a discussion on here. I think we've, we've kind of all talked about it at committee. But, but regarding setting the date for the first committee meeting in September, it would fall norm, if, it would, Monday would, is Labor Day. So this would move it to Wednesday, which we've done in the past because we have our first planning commission meeting in this room on Tuesday. So y'all want to, it sounded like everybody at committee was okay with sticking with, with moving it to Wednesday. Any other thoughts or concerns? Okay, perfect. Sorry, Mike. Okay, is that a, okay then to, okay, we're moving it to Wednesday, Mike. We'll miss you. All right, item 14, any comments from department heads? Council members? City attorney?
No, sir.
I have nothing either.
Both.
That's a motion to adjourn, and we stand adjourned. Thank you all.